Regular meeting out there, the Keith and Bert and Kirk, y'all just take over and show us what you want to show us. We want to listen.
We got a couple of things we want to talk to you about tonight, so briefly, we want to update you on what we're around on downtown revitalization. Making some progress on the plans. We met with the, I'll let Kirk kind of get into the detail, we met with some of the utilities. Albon Power, Centratal, well, what's it, well, Gaffin Show, Cable Company, about getting some of their overhead lines underground. We met with them Friday. We've given them three weeks to respond to us with their plans of when they can, you know, what it's going to take to get their lines relocated underground. How much it's going to cost. Basically, give them three weeks to get that started and told them that this needs to happen this summer. They all agreed that wouldn't be a problem.
They were receptive then?
Yeah, very receptive. We did put some money in the budget for utility relocation. Hopefully, we got, I feel confident we got enough to cover that, but we need to get their hard numbers. And they're going to give us those in three weeks to make sure we don't have any hiccups in the budget. We did talk with Albon Power early on in this process about a year ago, but hadn't got in detail with Centratal and the cable company. Now, they're starting to figure out what they need to do. Of course, the water and sewer and storm drainage will be part of your contract that the city lets. That will be included in your project. Kirk's going to kind of show you some stuff here on some layouts of where we'll do some of the landscaping, parking, and we'll kind of go over that.
I have, we give you a miniature version of the big boards that we have here. But basically, the first page you have there is an overview of the whole, the whole project area. We're starting up on First Street, all the way to on the north side of courthouse and working our way down to the Fourth Avenue that runs there in front of the school. We're also going to pick up these cross streets right here, just south of courthouse and pulling west there on First Avenue. We'll do, basically, for the most part, everything that's there is coming out and all new is going back in, is the simplest way to say. All the sidewalks will be ripping up roads for the storm drainage and for the water in the sewer and the utilities that'll be going in the ground. So, we, we are working to, working to find ways to do this in, in small segments as far as businesses. We want to make sure the businesses remain open, you know, through the process. So, we're going to, we're very hard to, to work our project notes and those sort of things, that the contractor is aware that you'll have to maintain access and occupancy throughout the entire project, no matter what's going on. But the, the landscaping and stuff does stop as we turn there on, on Fourth Avenue. It's mostly just storm sewer there. But we've, we've run the numbers on the drainage that we've, we figured everything for a 50-year storm. That means the worst rain you can get in 50 years. This system will take all that completely away with, with no problem. For this system that we've, we've worked our designs off of. For the most part, we're going to go back, we're going to go back with a six-foot sidewalk in front of every business. All, all the businesses have at least a six-foot sidewalk, some of them that sit back a little bit from the road will have a little bit more than six feet, obviously. But then there'll be curb and gutter all down through there. And the next page that you have shows right around the courthouse square. Some of the proposed parking there. And you can see that, I don't know if you can see it as well, and yours, there's some faded outlines under the boulder lines. That's the existing parking that's there now. So, you can see it's generally going back in, in pretty much the same place that it is. It, it moves a foot or two here or there and adjusts a little bit. It'll all be adjusted vertically is the challenge on this thing. As far as ADA guidelines, getting all of our crosswalks and all of our sidewalks slope to the correct guidelines that, that the, the handicap accessibility requires. So, that's the tricky part, but that's the part we're working on right now, was trying to get all the, the vertical pieces to work with all the storefront elevations as they are. But you can see here, we're going to do the parking, we're going to do bull bouts at the corners. And those bull bouts are what's going to give us some places to do some landscaping in the corners. We'll do brick pavers throughout the sidewalks in, in a pattern yet to be determined. But we'll have brick pavers, we'll have some brick here, we'll have, of course, these will all be ramps at the ends of these bull bouts and your crosswalks will come to those areas. So, I think it's going to be a, a really nice addition to that area. Because of the parking being an issue, I know the parking is a very big issue around the courthouse. We've, we've tried not to add any additional. You know, sometimes on downtown projects, we like to take a spot in the middle of the parking areas and make a nice little landscape island. We haven't, not, I don't do that on this project because of the parking. We would, you know, that would take three or four spaces away from each side and that, I know parking's a premium in that part of the world. And speaking of parking being a premium, one of the proposals that I have for you that I'd like for you to consider is First, First Avenue Southwest as it leaves the courthouse going west. I want you to think about making that a one-way road going away from the courthouse. Right now, it's, right now, it's angled parking on this side and it's parallel parking on the south side.
That's what I mean you talked about the other day, between?
Between the Taco Rio, it's here, 14th, or, 4th Gallery.
Making that street one.
Right, that, that street right there.
How many, which game?
Right now, there are eight places on the south side, a parallel spot. If you go angled parking, you get 16. So, you essentially double your parking.
Basically, you just have one road that's one-way.
You, one road, that's the only road that, that would be one-way in the area that we're, that we're talking about, is that, this, this one little stretch right here.
And you go which way?
It would go, it would go this way. It would go away, it would go west away from the courthouse.
And that's, and I would take another parking?
That would, yeah, that would get you eight additional places, eight additional spots of parking that you don't have now. Other than that, there's not really anywhere else where you can pick up additional parking. But that's eight less, eight less people upstairs on court day.
But we can't do, can we do that, if we have not got there, but in front of the 80's, solid go, well, you have to, no, listen.
I don't think there's enough room on that street.
That's right.
Do it both ways?
We'd have to be, stay parallel.
Well, you, right, if you made, if you made First Street, if you talked about doing First Street in one-way, then yes, that'd be a possibility. But I think that First Street's a pretty well-used travelway going both ways. My, my thought with this road is that this is not really heavily traveled in both directions. It's kind of, you know, most people are coming in or going out on this side of the courthouse.
That road's pretty tight going both ways anyway, right there.
It is a pretty tight fit already, going both ways, it is. We, we, there is enough room to go back, like it is, if you wanted to, but that takes spots for one, one-way road.
But with the city parking being right up there and it being one-way going out, what kind of problem would that instill? With people parking in the city parking lot to come in, coming into the courthouse if we're going the opposite, if we're going west?
City parking over here. They have to go blocks south of there, get to the courthouse.
Okay.
But that'd be, that'd use that road to go to the parking lot.
This is, this is the direction you, this is the direction you're going to, to the city parking lot from the courthouse. This is the road, you're going in this direction to get to the city parking. So, you would stop here if you could, if you can't, then you go on and fill this part again.
If you go the other way, then you have to circle all the way back around.
You have to come down, you have to go south a block or, or north a block to get back to the courthouse. But that, that's the only big change, everything else is generally going back in the same configuration with parallel parking and the, and the angled parking lot. And that's your last page there. Those are some typical sections. All these are working from, all these are working from this intersection, looking up this way, looking down that way, and looking down this way, these three sections. And those are just to show you, give you an idea of the, the parking and the travel area that we're talking about. Talking about a six, what shows up as a six-and-a-half foot sidewalk, because you get the top of the curb, top of the curb, top of the curb's six inches. So, you get a six-and-a-half foot sidewalk walking the area. Then you've got your curb and then you've got angled parking that's 16 and a half feet. This would be the street on the west side of the courthouse. 24, a little over 24 feet of travelway, two-way traffic, and then another 16 and a half, and then the courthouse over here on this side. So, that's, you can see these little bitty lines that are on here are where the angled parking backs up to now. So, we are coming in just a little further in, but there's still 24 feet, it's, it's plenty of room for two-way traffic to, to move back and forth. Then, as you move down to the next one, the next one is Second Avenue. That's the, that's the one-way street. If we chose to do the one-way street, we have the sidewalk angled parking, a travelway of 15 and a half feet, angled parking on the other side. And then the bottom is the remainder of First Avenue going south from the courthouse, that's angled parking on one side and parallel parking on the other. See, this side is be the parallel parking, and we end it with a, again, a little over 24 feet, angled parking on the other side.
There's a real big drop-off right there on the right, right across the solid go, right by Anne's Place, or Anne's Boutique on the right. There's a booth place there, I think she played, Sports Gallery, Anne's.
The sidewalk is, is a lot higher, yes.
Well, and it is so thick, are you going to bring all this down or?
That is our goal. I, I said, you know, as I said earlier, that's the tricky part, is getting all the vertical things to, to work out on this and still be ADA accessible. We've got to maintain accessibility into the store, storefronts at certain elevation, we've got to. Right, so, you know, all of our, all of our sidewalks work off of the store front elevations. And then we work back from there to the, to the curb and then we work down and then we try to work that back to the, to the street without raising or lowering the street too much. Some of the streets will be raised and lowered a few inches one way or the other, you know, as we, as we do this work, but we're, we're trying not to make major changes.
If there are places where that curb is greater than 12 inches, we'll have to do some type of handrail to, you know, discourage people from stepping off the curb there.
Right, if it gets over 12 inches, if it gets over 12 inches, you know, the guidelines say we have to put in a handrail, which we will do. I, I'd like to avoid that situation if we can, I'd like to get them all, you know, down to close to six inches as we can get. But I haven't got that far within our calculations, so I don't know for sure. But if we do end it with a place where it is higher than 12 inches, we'll get handrails.
Of course, that's the only.
That's the biggest, that's the biggest drop that I'm aware of right now.
Over all the area.
And then, if you go further than in those packets, there are a few more sheets. Talk a little bit about the lighting. The first one is a proposed light that I'd like you to think about. It's a little bit different than what you've seen probably in some of the towns around here. You know, I'd like for you to consider doing something that maybe will help you stand out a little bit, be a little bit different from, from what the other little towns have been doing. This is one that's actually very similar to a structure going in in Tuscaloosa in some of their renovation work that they're doing after the tornado. And what it is, is a very, it's a 32-foot pole, so you get a very tall streetlight type structure. And then you get a smaller pedestrian light at the bottom. And then the teardrops, what that allows us to do, budget-wise, it doesn't hurt us very much because we get a few less poles than you have if you have shorter poles and shorter lights. You get the pole up higher, you get a light, broader lights, you can cover more area. So, budget-wise, it works out about the same for a fewer number of poles that are just taller with broader lights on them.
Each pole have power hours?
Each pole have power hours, yes. And if you, if you go on to the next couple of pages, it just, just some pieces out of the catalog that show you. Once we, once we've picked a base, a base and a pole and/or a bracket, then you can see there's, there's options to put our stop signs, our street signs. That's what this, this one is, is the stop sign with a street, street sign on top of it, in the same, out of the same material. So, we get a uniform look, you don't have a, you know, shiny metal in the post there for a stop sign. It's the same color, if you go with black, it's black, it's the same color, same style as, as everything else. And then the last page is just showing some more options that we have that to go on the poles.
Kimmy, was this base on this one that you showed us with the two lights, was it what we looked at the other day? Was it the same base or was, I thought, well, it was 1910, is this 25, Kirk?
I'm sorry?
This base of this one, the two lights, this is 25-foot base?
You can, you can pick, yes, 25-inch standard, yes, ma'am.
It's actually wider than the one we found that. Because the biggest, large, when we looked at it, it wasn't that thing.
I have a, I have a, I have a catalog and I'd love to come back sometime and sit down with whoever y'all would like to be picking your colors and your styles. I know Kimmy would like to be involved with that with the downtown stuff. But basically, it's a, it's kind of like a jigsaw puzzle. You pick a base, you pick up, you pick a pole, there's lots of different size, tile bases, you pick a base style, you pick a pole style. And then at the back, there's all the different, somewhere in there. In the back, there's all the different brackets and cross brackets and sign banners, there's some decorative brackets and finials and those kind of things. And basically, we just would sit down and go through and pick out the.
Cross out the poles?
Yeah, get the individual pieces that we want.
We found out.
The base we want, the pole we want, the brackets we want.
Every little thing that we looked at had all of these variables and, and that brings up another question about the, what are your feelings about the, uh, design? What's my word, Kimmy, or clear globe or this that had the little hubble rough, the crackle glass?
Crackle versus.
Clear glass. Of course, I hope it depends on the bow or the down bow, down hang or pointing upward, you know, which one goes up more high. I guess that would come in that meeting there.
Right, it would. The, the, the style that I like, of course, you're free to choose any style you like, and those are in here too, the traditional, what we call acorn top poles. You know, this pole with the light sitting up at the top, we do a lot of those, but again, this would be something that would, the teardrop would be something unique, I think, to the area.
When you said power on the pole, is that power at the bottom of the pole for like our downtown activity?
It can be, it can be anywhere we, we'd like it to be.
If you ever want to do these for Christmas lights, we might want to do a receptacle, 15-foot, 12, 15-foot of big handle.
That's kind of why we want to do banners.
There are options to do banners, there's options to do landscape planting, you know, holders, flower lights, I don't know, just hanging baskets, excuse me. So, there, there are lots of options and, you know, generally, that works out well if we put two or three people in charge of that and then let them bring the weight and the burden. I'd be glad to meet with that group whenever, whenever that happens. We're, we're on track, we're, we're working forward, moving forward with all of our design. We'll be looking back again with utilities in three weeks and that'll help move things forward also there. We are.
So, cable, phone, water, power, everything's still be underground?
Everything will be underground. There will be at least one crossing.
Yeah, there's one.
Second, Second Avenue, I believe. That will, there will still be a wire going across perpendicular to our project, there'll be still be one transmission line going across. But he's, he's said he's looking at moving his poles back about halfway down the intersection of both sides. So, there won't be any poles there, there'll be one or possibly two, two or three, you know, wires spanning across, but that'll be it. Everything else will be in the ground, all the services for the phone and all the services for the cable will be working with us as we go through the project to serve all the customers under the sidewalks. Any other questions?
I want to hear the instructions and if mine starts.
We are, we are thinking that we should finish design and be ready to advertise by middle, end of April, which puts us taking bids end of May, which puts us starting construction end of.
It's kind of contingent upon what the utilities tell us in three weeks when they meet with us, no stack that we're running to with them.
So, it could be Christmas before it's done or?
It's probably going to be a six to nine-month construction time, so it may spill over into 2014. Especially the, the final paving that we'll do, that'll be the last thing to do, that's really a springtime activity.
But you're thinking about a way to, that everybody can walk, go the sidewalks and still go to the businesses, so the businesses are not being?
Maintain access to all businesses at all times.
Yes, well, there will be notes that the contractor will have to maintain.
And maybe a stone sidewalk with some plywood down on top of it temporarily, this is, still be able to have access.
We don't want, we don't want to shut them down for you in the meantime.
So, where's that labor, oh, that's, uh, somewhere else.
Be difficult to have it in this area in October, that's going to be about the middle of the project.
Have a Christmas parade, or Saturday, December?
Yeah, that's not to say that we couldn't tell the contractor for that period of time, you know, that week during your fall festival to shut down, but it's going to be a lot of construction activity going on.
Well, the parade could go up the main drag, I would think, and just, just redirect it for this.
Go around the next, right?
One time.
Well, in the end, it'd be worth it, being in convenience for a little while, the final project, what you're going to look at and how come.
A one-time thing.
Yeah, I believe your, your final product, in addition to looking nice, you're going to have brand-new water, brand-new.
Mine could have some type of festival, after it's completed, you just can move the date forward or move it, just postpone it, I don't know. Just thinking.
Back on page two, of the parking issue?
Yes.
I asked Keith, interrupted there, these lines that are shown more frequently together, closer together, there's only a few of them. And is that the handicap parking that we have available?
Yeah, those are the existing handicap spaces and we'll have to go back.
We have four.
We'll go back with, generally, you get two spaces for every existing.
You have four, but you'll.
Existing, we have four.
We'll probably go back with more than that.
Okay. Seeing that we're adding diagonal parking here over in front of Logan's Furniture and over here on the spanoff in Town Square, First Avenue side. Just from looking at other towns, sometimes that works out a little bit better, I think, that I've seen. If you could put them closer to the bull bouts, especially if your van accessible and stuff like that, rather than in the middle. Because people have a tendency to want to scoot over into those handicap and it makes those handicap places a little smaller than, than they should be.
Well, that, it would work out well with the bull bouts too, because that's where our grounds are.
Correct.
I know that this is a moving target question, but in terms of the cost of what we're, with the project, are you seeing anything that's cropped up in the meantime to show that the cost, the overall cost of project's going to be a lot larger than what they've been originally anticipated or?
The only thing that would be unknown is the utility costs that we don't control, the Centratal, Albon Power. And talking to them Friday, they didn't see anything major that was going to be out of our budgets.
And the other elements are pretty much staying, what you think, what you thought.
Bert, is anything in this street here in front of the school, anything on that, come out, push that this year? It ends right there, don't it? This is not the drain, it's, nobody redone right in there somewhere?
Yeah, the drainage will come down the road. We didn't originally budget any money to do anything on, on that street.
Part of our drainage will go where the existing sidewalk's at, so we'll have to report that, so it'll be a new sidewalk, especially going west.
That's taking it back now, going back under the football field or under the?
A portion of it. Right now, all the drainage goes east across the 43.
So, you go reroute the drainage?
Reroute a portion of it, a portion of east and a portion of west.
Yeah, as we talked about the other day, we're looking at the possibility of taking the drainage on the east side. Right now, the drainage comes together as it comes south, as the drainage comes together to one side of the road and it all turns east. We're looking at the possibility of keeping the drainage separated on the west side and east side of the road and then taking part of it west and part of it east. That would allow the, that would allow everything to work real smoothly.
Is there a committee you want us to get with as far as picking lights and making some of these decisions or coordinate that with you?
Yeah, well, Kimmy's for the downtown revitalization, they've looked at this book, picked out some that they might need to get with your catalog now. We've got, she's got notes and her, and they wanted to kind of fit in with Aggie Plaza too, Brable Boone Jackson's project, the Aggie Plaza project. So, they're going to have lights going all the way down that road too, toward the pocket park and then back up 17 until that driveway comes into school.
Did they already pick their lights?
Well, they're going to do what we do.
They're just, they're us.
They're, they're okay.
So, several people trying to come together and find something everybody likes.
Of course, we want to replace those at Pocket Park and use those maybe someplace else, that's what some ops are talking about.
There's time when we can get everybody, as many people as we need, or a few people if we can get.
Right.
As few as you can get, but as many as you need.
Or somebody that's representing each thing.
Sure, yeah. If we can get that together, let me know what it is, we can come and sit down and go through all the specifics that we'll need to choose.
When's the better times for you, like in the evenings or at midnight?
Whenever, whenever y'all can get together, there's more of you than there are of me.
I saw not a few leaving there.
You know, it's not something I have to have immediately, I need to decide pretty quick if we're going to go with the taller lights. That does, that affects the layout of the lighting.
They would not have to be that same height, would they, some lights or when they are? If you pick one, they all have to pretty much match height.
Well, the, the beauty of the, the light that we were looking at there with the tall light and the shorter light.
Well, you make them all the same, you could use less lights.
You, you can use less lights, but you could also take half that light, that's what we're going to do. Is that just, just the smaller pole and stop the top of the pole there.
There you go.
For pedestrian lighting along the.
That's what I was.
Because we are eliminating all the existing power poles along the stretch, you're not going to have a lot of streetlights. We just do the smaller pedestrian, we're lighting the sidewalk, we're not lighting the street, so that's a good reason to do this taller side.
How many lights have you got figured in on the project? Just say about 30?
Really say 30, yeah, but.
Well, that's not including those of the Aggie Plaza group wanting to go down the sidewalk there, because they were talking about 16, but felt they could go less. Well, we'll have to go with less down through there, I think.
Well, you know, if we, if we went with the taller light with the, with the teardrop, with the shorter light, then they could go with the shorter version of, of that same pole, you know, for, for their pedestrian lighting.
And we still all.
And it would all tie together.
Well, do they, do they determine way about this down the, down 43, about how many we need down through there? I know we can talk about that later, but who's going to make that decision about how many?
Well, they've got a plan, but I'm not going to say I don't know. Probably according to their, how much money they've raised to do, because they, we can't pay for all of them, so they're failing.
Well, then we just paid for the ones in the pocket park to replace those, you know, but then it would be the ones down 17 and then up 43.
There's an example of what it, this would be something, some of what we're doing and we did just something like that with the same fixture.
I feel like some of them, that's where we can just go, so there's some already up in that.
I don't know if they're, I don't know if they, I know they had planned those. The, yeah, in the tornado area?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am, that's where they're, that's where they're talking about, but I didn't know what they'd even rub yet.
I know that you made something about paying for the flash, the city can go to Albon Power and lease them.
You've got two options, you can lease a pole from Albon Power, you pay a monthly fee, they put the pole up, they maintain it, they change the bulbs. Or you can just purchase your own fixture and then you maintain them and just pay a unmetered power bill.
But you said in the long run, probably it's cheaper to do that.
It is expensive with a decorative pole like this, you know, it may be sixty, seventy dollars per month, per pole, if you're paying a lease payment from Alvin Power.
Yeah, your, your, your utility cost on decorative lighting is not that high.
So if we purchased a light and we maintained it too.
You know, when you, when you.
You know, they're, they're basically charging you the same price for the pole, they're just, you're just paying them over a period of time, plus interest still probably. I'm sure that works out in there, baby.
Are they, yeah, high enough or short enough, we can get in and change or set up when we need to. We have a.
The, yeah, the, the two lights that we're talking about, the tallest light would be close to thirty feet tall. The lower light would probably be around fifteen too. Your Christmas lights would probably be lower, wouldn't be all the way at the top, they'd probably.
We probably will make sure your buggy truck can reach that.
Yeah, we need to know how high your truck can get, so, I mean, we could, we can, whatever height they need to be, we can make them that high.
They don't have to be thirty.
No, they don't have to be thirty. That's just, that's kind of.
Kind of discussed the other day too, if we do, if we look at the brackets for downtown, that hauls the, the small banners. Putting some of the present day Christmas lights further into the outskirts areas that have businesses. And just basically sticking with maybe wreaths and banners and stuff like that downtown.
But yeah, that would be a definite number we need to get out of the trucks. And then we can work, you know, we can work all of our.
Do you find that the cities that have those, these decorative poles and all, to me, it just looks a little more classy on the poles to not have all these lights thrown around so much as you just have the decorative or decorations on the poles, whether it be banners, bows lit, or some kind of lighting fixture or, or something, and move the lights farther out. Do you see it both ways or?
Seen it both ways, I don't personally, if you ask me my personal opinion, I like simple. I like the bows on the poles. Better folks that don't.
All your time's limited right now, so we just want to talk about much, much of our building. So we need to come back to another sit down during the day session or tonight, whatever, group that you want to.
Yeah, let's talk back there.
I want to talk a little bit about the most of our building we met a few weeks ago, the mayor and a couple of others of you, and, and talk about, I need to get this pretty close to you so you can see it. We talked about what might be some possibilities for the most of our building and the most of our site. Let me, let me sort of. That's the whole site, the whole site. That's the footprint of existing, don't know where it is. We looked at, on the basic building itself, I think you need, at a minimum, you'd need to tear down the, the old one story part, the office part out front, and that's that area right there. So that would leave this area right here, which is the big two-story part of the building, the newest part of the building. That'd leave that part available to be renovated. And then we got to talk about what we can put inside that space. And we looked at laying out a new police department, and a new senior center, and a new, what we call them, multipurpose area. That could be used for a whole lot of stuff. The senior center, the, the police department being about thirty-four hundred square feet each. This on common area being about two thousand square feet. And this area being about seventeen thousand square feet. That's basically, between those columns is fifty feet? Fifty feet in that direction and about sixty in the other direction, isn't it?
Fifty by.
Twenty-nine, fifty by twenty-five. That's a pretty, the columns get in the way, but it's a big space to, to be open, of course, it would be, could be two stories tall, if you needed it. The problem with doing any of that is that the roof's gonna be fixed. It wouldn't, wouldn't make any sense to just fix the roof here, you'd probably need to fix the whole roof. When you do that, then you got, even with this big amount of space that we're using, it only takes up that much space out of that big old giant building. Leaves a lot of extra space for other things. But don't know if you'd have any need for other things by this point in time. It would, it would, it would cost about, to renovate that building, to demolish the old building, to finish off the spacing as we have them finished off. Would cost about four point two million dollars. And that would, that would of course build all this, and then you'd have all this extra empty space over here. If you were, the mayor asked the question when we were here last time, if we were to build that space, this space by itself as a separate building, what would that cost? Wouldn't that actually be cheaper to do that, because you're not paying for that whole big roof? So you could build all those buildings freestanding for three point eight million. So the question becomes, is it worth it to spend that extra money and have all that extra space? My biggest concern is, I've told the mayor several times, my biggest concern is that when, if we tear all that building down, this, at least half this area right here has a full basement. And we're gonna be left with a big old hole sitting there, it's gonna be flat up to right here and it's gonna drop off. Drop off all right, drop off in that hole.
I can hope to, but if we keep it like that, where you got the multipurpose space is seventeen five, but if we had something like the horse festival, would need a little bit more than that, we could go into that new area on those rare occasions when we'd need more than seventeen five.
You could, it would need to have some minimal work done like lights and maybe some ventilation and that sort of thing. But, yeah, you could, you could do that, could go over that space.
How many spaces it takes, Scott, or like ten, give that a jib, I mean, square foot, if we had like seventy vendors instead of forty thousand at this time?
They had about that much, a little, little less than I think this, this time.
How many square foot did you think?
About sixteen or something.
Could've used more, turned out to be like thirty.
So what would we actually need?
Be about twenty-five, thirty thousand square feet.
There's nothing that says that you couldn't take an extra space behind this, since he has a little more room, more finishing, lighting at least and some ventilation, to be able to expand out into that area if you need to.
Oh, that wouldn't have to be finished, you know, if you had that big space.
It would not have to be finished, it could be, it could be left semi-finished. You'd want, you'd want enough minimal lights to be able to see what's sitting there, enough insulation so it doesn't get stuffy. But I'm not talking about actives, I'm just talking about ventilation. But I got to thinking during this process, you know, what, what would you, what could you use the big old hole for? If, if we, if you decided you wanna tear it down and if the holes left and. The idea hit me that it might, it might make a, a pretty nice little amphitheater, outdoor amphitheater. If we took this top of this hole and sort it down to the bottom, be a natural grass. It, it would sort of be a semi circle.
Now, this price, this does not include getting rid of the asbestos and lead or whatever is in that pile, it doesn't? No, this is just construction.
That's just, that's demolition of the building, but not that, not that extra removal.
And what would we, I said we had two or three quotes, did we not? Plan about what that would cost us, was it gonna like about thirty-five thousand?
Yeah, they were probably thirty, thirty-five, thirty-six.
Something like that?
But we, I do have a big number for contingencies in there, so, you know, some of that sort of stuff could probably cover. That, that sort of stuff could, might, might could be covered. But the rest of the site, just to, just to show you how much room there is out there, there's room for a, a nice water park, as much money as you'd wanna spend. Thirty-five million dollars, you wouldn't spend that, could go, could be eaten up in that little hole right there. There's a nice place to get five ball fields and a five play, and a mile walking trail around it, and a soccer field. So it's a nice site. It would have a lot of, lot of parking that we could make for the ball fields, which is always a problem with ball fields. It could be, it's a, it's a nice piece of property.
This walking trail, which side am I looking at there with that, we won't even talk about enhancing that, but it had you riverside.
It'd be down next to the river. Yeah, the river's on that side over there.
I'll be for the, what would it be to connect him, but Bevel's not, is that triangle comes to a point there? Bevel's basically there, is there any way to connect the walking trail to, you know, the college and the apartment complex?
Yeah, you're right, it wouldn't be far down the river to that, probably, I, I didn't look at that this night, it couldn't be far.
Looks good.
But I guess your basic question is, how bad do you need this stuff right now? Where do you come up with that kind of money, that's a lot of money. And then you got, you know, all this development would be, that'd be a million dollar of ball fields easily. The, the water park could be three to five million, or however I think you wanna be making.
Bring you change, will you, Chris?
Okay, I'm going around and fucking.
Sorry, I don't, I don't remember, a guy, it used to be a senator from the state of Illinois, United States Senator Everett.
Dirkson.
Yes.
Dirkson. He's, Everett said one day, they got the crazy about the government spending money, and he said, yeah, he said, yeah, you spend a billion here and you spend a billion there, and so before you know it, you're running the money. And that was thirty years ago when he said that. So you spend a billion here, spend a billion there, running the money.
Looks great.
But I, I'll, I'll leave that, and y'all can think about, talk about it. But we just wanted to know what your option likely would be.
Could it be done in phases?
Oh, you'd have to.
I mean, you'd have to fix that roof all at one time.
Oh, yeah, that would definitely.
You'd have to do all the roof at one time, but the rest of it could be done in parts or pieces if you wanted to.
What would we call you down the road, Liam, one time?
All right, well, yeah, yeah, I got a lot to ponder on tonight. We, we, we appreciate talking to you, the work you guys do. I got to thinking way up here, I think this is the first presentation I've ever done with Kurt in all these years. We, we, you know, there's a radio show in Birmingham, Bert Kurt, so we were the original Bert.
I don't, I'm not sure, Kurt, what's your last name?
Pinkins.
This is Bert's son.
Oh, that's your son, okay, I didn't know that. You never, you never showed him off, so that's one good.
And you've heard of Beethat?
Yes, yes.
Famous Beethat, okay.
Famous.
So y'all work together?
Yeah, I was actually chained to a desk for several years.
Yeah.
I broke loose.
He's my IT guy, my computer guru, and I wouldn't let him leave that desk. It's valuable there. Well, we appreciate Bob Keating. Yeah, I don't know this anymore, I'm gonna go hunt some peas and corbin.
Appreciate y'all.
Yeah, appreciate it.
So you're not staying for council, maybe?
Not unless you're new.
After saying this weekend at Jerry Brown, we may.
What you got to happen?
I'm telling you, now sometime, I don't know when, we may just take out, stepping out on faith, we're gonna have to do something similar. Run out.
Yeah, this roof repair, it's the roof as is, it's not racing, it's, it's, I mean, it's the roof as is, flat.
Not changing the roof, just leaving it, putting a membrane on the, on the roof, which is, the flat roofs have gotten a real bad reputation over the years because they've always leaked, but the membrane roofs that we use now are a lot, lot, lot better than, than it used to be. And you can pretty well, you can pretty well figure that it's gonna, you'd get a lot of use out of this membrane roof. They, they talk about twenty year.
Yeah, twenty year warranty.
Did you do the Durler? The Durler?
Yeah.
The, the company that we, was over there in the courthouse, they started out as a pool liner company. They're just like, keep it in, let you keep it out.
It's a, it's a really good material.
I was telling them, if you don't leave us where we're going, unless you're staying for council, man.
Going back to Bert. No, sir, I, I think we're done unless they got some questions. Good to see y'all, people.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate being back here.
Bring back all time.
That's right. All we need is Tim, I'm sorry, we didn't get to see Tim.
He might be out there, we gotta show him.
No, where are you? You watch him, he will have forgotten.
See, fellas.
Well, Kurt, I guess then you just get with you regarding the lights and all that stuff?
Yeah, that'll be good, and as we move forward, I'm afraid y'all see a lot more of me.
Well, we're not forward to it.
Move forward on this.
Good to know you're pretty good, I'm sorry.
Thank y'all, appreciate it.
Thank you, several in our, all of our areas. Court. Go out there, if you get any questions, we'll. You got some for Jim, I talked about two from his work there around. Baron will be going back to firefighting.
But I'm only in the states. Like tomorrow, okay.
Now, they're, he's, with, with her payroll, can be better for Jim or start Thursday, I think.
Thursday's the first day.
But they're gonna just go ahead and swap out tomorrow.
So they're gonna send Tim and Baron swapping positions?
Baron is resigning.
Oh.
So we're going, yes, you.
He's gonna stay with the department?
He's gonna stay with the department. Tim, we're going, going to Tim just temporarily, until we can make permanent suspension.
And he'll do the inspections on Baron?
Yeah, just personal, decided it thought it was time to settle the rule. Give somebody else a chance. Nobody's asking Baron to leave, no, but they're clear out there. Still have, but still mostly firefight, I mean, his job is firefighting, yeah, still be in the suspension. Then Tim will be having to.
Tim Rock, okay. Well, there's Tim right there, so, how long do you think?
I hope we can do something in the next, one few weeks. I've got to talk to the other firefighters, see if he's interested, and then we'll all come back, talk to them again. Couple of faces are interested, but there's, there's a couple things that aren't changes, so.
Call Tim, yeah, somebody's on the phone. So we're, we call over there.
Yeah, Tim will be more. We're gonna go off with the criminals.
Only a turn, okay.
Then we'll come back and dial some other folks.
So it's going there, okay.
And Tim's assistant fires.
Yeah, sure. Can I come back later and get tacos and stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, what's this about?
He's just come in, talked us about the lighting.
Oh, is he?
That he, uh, thought it's a misunderstanding. He said, I just want to clarify that I, I am available. If we need a contract, we don't have a contract with him. And I told him on the phone, you know, we...
Did you still send him the actual message?
See, that, that'll remember. Let's go get there. This one's talk for a second.
Okay, that's good, I didn't know. Somebody just called him, like, he's late, but he...
I called him yesterday. No, I called him yesterday and I left him a message. Well, I didn't know that he lived in... So that's why I called. I called his house, I left a message for the wife. I didn't call his cell phone.
Is that right? So, so Tom, they're gonna have to apply to any covenants?
That's right.
With their own property.
Well, you know, the...
I have a spot of question. All right, before you get out there, there's no warranty, no nothing on the pump that we need to get because he hasn't been, he hasn't gone ahead to say, you know, we're gonna get it. But before he does, he'll make way to wear of the warranty and, and all the stuff on it. And I suggest we go with the new pump as soon as we can.
I'm not going with the repairing again, but I don't think...
Rod is supposed to be there, so I'll get him to explain to you. He said, the pump has been repaired about three or four times. So five times it's been repaired, so...
Probably this price, I'll be round, right?
If we do a new one, we won't have to repair it for years and years instead of repairing it for two, three years. I mean, I know it's cheaper to repair it, but in the long run, it might not be, so. I got a rope for y'all to look at.
Everything's coming out of the nuts.
My recommendation, how I brought on him to make a repair, that's doing some floor covering after wastewater plant and some paint.
It's never had anything that...
It's never had, pardon me, the floor cover the same as it was when it was built. So he's gonna pull up the old vinyl, put down some ceramic tile that'll last for years. Now, I think there's a need to get in four or five instances where it's no more than twenty-six hundred fifty dollars.
And this is for the labor and the materials?
And the materials.
So that's not a bad deal.
And that's painting, uh...
Hallways.
Their main office there, not the lounge, was it the lounge? It didn't look bad when I was down there, but I...
They probably gave it to...
No, that's true. That was probably the same. Have you, uh... Well, I called him, I called him and let him know that he should, Rod, you're saying, or somehow he didn't come in. You, you got there in the morning?
No, no. I was watching Giddy, was it?